We are good. All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's special session. It is the reorganization of the board and our committee, the whole meeting for tonight, Monday, May 6, 2024. Like to call this meeting to order. We have met official compliance with all of our notifications. Roll call, please.
Nick Schumacher.
Here.
Laura Gapsky.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Sarah Schubert McComb.
Here.
I'm here. President Seawald.
Here. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by completing a public comment signup sheet by the entrance. Any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration is not allowed. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. So first tonight, we have our reorganization of our board. But I'd like to welcome and congratulate our three new board members. Nick Olson, Laura Gapsky, and Sarah Schubert McComb. Certainly. Looking forward to working with you. And in a hockey analogy, when there's one man short on the team. The Superior Spartan Board of Education is now back at full strength. So our first order business is our election of officers for 2024-25. The first one is the presidency.
I nominate Steve.
Olson.
Stan.
There's a motion and a second for Steve Olson to be president. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second is our vice president. Call for nominations. I'd like to nominate Ed Gallagher. There's a motion and a second for Ed Gallagher as the vice president. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Treasure, call for nominations.
Nominate Nicholas Olson.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for Nicholas Olson as the treasurer. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The school clerk.
Nominate Lake Schumacher.
Second. Motion and a second for Nicholas Schumacher as the school clerk. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. She carries. Appointment of secretary deputy clerk. Nomination of Ann Schultz for this position.
Second.
Motion and a second for the appointment of secretary deputy clerk Ann Schultz. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Appointment of representative to the annual CISA 12 convention, May 28, 2024.
Nominate Laura.
Motion and a second. For Gapsky, the representative to CISA number 12. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Appointment of delegate and alternate to the annual WASP convention in January 25. I would like to appoint Brooke Taylor to that position.
Second.
Appointment of Brooke Taylor. And a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. She carries. Appointment of, excuse me.
Yes.
My fault.
An alternate.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate myself for an alternate, please.
Second.
Motion and a second. Laura Gapsky as the alternate to the WASP convention. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Appointment of school board representative to the Superior Scholarship Foundation Board of Directors.
Nominate Brooke.
Okay. Nominate Brooke Taylor. Motion and a second. Favor signified. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Board committee preferences for 24-25. There's an online form that we've all been asked to view, but our choices, our number one choice would be one. A second choice would be two, and our third choice, three, and so on and so forth. There are six committees. As you fill that out, then I will review that with Ann, and then I will assign. Assign you as the chair of that committee, and then also place two other board members on that committee with you. Probably could have this ready by next week.
You're the one who decides whenever you're ready.
Yeah, we will have this next week. Right. And I did it.
Or you'll get placed wherever. Yeah, or Steve will decide. Yeah.
Just shoot your email. Did you send it to the school board email at night? It was in the meeting. I can send it to you. For this week's.
Last Friday.
So I got the three from, sorry, this is just a thing. I don't want to take up too much time, but I got the three from Amy, but I don't have it based. The most recent.
I'll send you the weekly update on Friday. I'll make sure you didn't get missed somehow.
Between my personal.
Okay, I'll. I'll send you the weekly update on Friday. Do you get it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Did you fill it?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I did.
Did they?
All right. Next up is the consideration of the board meeting scheduled for 2024-25. You do have a copy in view that you've been asked to look at.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the Board of Education scheduled meetings for 2024-25. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. She carries. Move on to the committee, the whole agenda. Action taken at today's meeting is to forward the recommendation for final approval at the next regular school board meeting. On Monday, May 13, 2024. I'd call this meeting to order. We have met official compliance with all of our notifications. Roll call, please.
Good evening.
Nick Schumacher.
Here.
Laura Gapsky.
Yes.
Brooke Taylor.
Yeah.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Sarah McComb.
Here.
You prefer Schubert McComb or McComb?
Yep, it's both.
Get it.
Completely both.
Get it right.
No, it's fine. It's fine.
I'm sorry. President Olson.
Here. Next is the public comment section. There were, there's nobody that signed up. We'll then move on to the report of our superintendent.
Okay, we have a couple of principal updates tonight. First up, um, there you are. Come on over. Talking about four corners. Oh, Ann, do you have her presentation?
I do. I don't want to click. All right. Well, first of all, good evening, President Olson and our new board members. Welcome. My name is Kendra Donaldson, and I'm taught at Four Corners Elementary. Feels like I was just here in January, and now it's May already.
Have fun.
Really gone fast. No kidding. So a couple of things that we want to go through, and I've got a few notes for some things that didn't necessarily fit on the slide, but I thought were important to. As we go through. So first of all, celebrations. So over the winter and into the spring. We just, last week had our transition morning with our Lake Superior students who will be joining us next year, and it really went well. The kids had a good time. We had some fifth grade ambassadors that took them on tours and answered questions, and it was just really cool to see. The kids interact and the questions that they asked. And we're really fortunate that we have two staff members that are split between our building and Lake Superior, so they were there to. Kind of help bridge that gap and explain to the kids, you know, how they're the same and how they're different. So we got a lot of good feedback from the kids. They sent us nice little notes that. It sounds like they're really excited. So that made me feel good. Our second celebration is forward testing, state testing. We finished up, and we tested 100% of our third, fourth, and fifth graders this year. So I think it's the second year. Actually, that's right. And then the last thing is, we just recently completed an analysis of our spring climate data. We'll see in our goals. In just a moment, our second goal was around students feeling included in their school. And what we found was 97% of our third through fifth grade students noted that they feel included at school, and that's up from 85% from last year. So. Worked really hard and definitely, definitely shows in our data. As far as challenges are concerned, you know, we're all facing challenges. Number one, not a surprise. I mean, that's across the board. I think everybody, everybody in this room, everybody in every school is feeling some stress around that. Things have started to settle a little bit, especially now that paraprofessionals know where they're going, and everybody can kind of, you know, breathe a sigh of relief. And get moving on until the end of the school year. The other thing is, we've, I would say in the last month, have been hit really hard with a lot of just random illnesses, and so that's really affected our attendance, unfortunately. Which is what made our 100% on the forward even more amazing. Our staff really worked hard to make sure that we got every student despite the things that we had go through our building, which I'm sure is not different than other buildings. So as far as our goals are concerned, like I said, we have really had two goals this year that we continue to work on. Our first goal is that 100% of our students. In K5 will be in the low risk or on track category according to Fastbridge in early literacy and reading by the end of the year. Fastbridge testing just opened up this week, so we're in the process of doing that now, and we'll be going through the data with case touch. On the 22nd, I believe, with our leadership team. So we're expecting good results. Our kids have worked really hard. We're seeing lots of good gains with our students this year. And then our second goal, like I said, was the goal around our culture and that 100, we wanted 100% of our kids to report feeling included in their school. We got to 97%, so it's not quite 100. So we will definitely keep towards that, because we want all of our kids to make sure that they feel welcome and seen and heard. As far as our action steps, we're really kind of in that last 50 yards of the race, so to speak. So for the remainder of the year. At our 150-day mark, we reviewed our practice profile and literacy as a staff to really talk about, okay, are we meeting those goals we said that we wanted? So a practice profile really is like a rubric for teachers. So if we're doing this exactly the way it should be, every single day, what would it look like, sound like, feel like in the classroom? Teachers set their own goals and then measured themselves and then went back and either reviewed their goal, revised their goal, or made a new goal, depending on where they were. We also took a look at our instructional intervention plan for our students that are in our target group, which is the lowest 25%. On standardized tests and really focused on individual interventions for those students. So in the areas where they needed, they needed help in comprehension, if they needed help in fluency, to make sure that those things were tailored to exactly what they needed. And then for the remainder of the year, like I said, we'll be reviewing our Fastbridge data with Kate on the 22nd. And then after that, we need to determine where our goal is going to be for next year. So of course, we know forward data doesn't come out until summer, because that's super convenient. But we will definitely take a look at that. A lot of times, our leadership team will meet for a half a day in the summertime to take a look at that and get ahead on setting some of our goals for the year.
And I ask, who's a part of making those goals?
So our leadership team initially makes those goals, but really our entire staff is. Yeah, we need to have buy-in from everybody. We can't just say, okay, this is your goal. Now go forth and do greatness. We have to hold it. And then the last thing we'll do towards the end of the year is grade levels. We'll get together and meet to determine, okay, so as soon as we hit the ground in September. That first week of school, that second week of school, who are the students that we need to continue interventions with? We don't want to waste any time. We want to, we know who those kids are. We know who needs a little bit of extra support, and we need to get that list going right away. Couple of things that I did want to note. So we have our Spartan showcase coming up. Our two folks, our student and our staff member will be recognized this Friday, so Dr. Starzacki is going to come over, and it's going to be big fun.
We're having assembly.
Yes, we.
Absolutely.
We've also got our transition night tomorrow, so all of the new families that will be coming to Four Corners are invited to come to our building tomorrow. We've got a scavenger hunt. We've got some treats and fun things that are planned for those families, so they get to see our building, meet our staff, just kind of get a feel for what it's like. We've got lots of field trips happening. It's field trips, I think, just about every week. And thank you to transportation for figuring all of that out for us. Our fifth grade annual pancake day is coming up, so the maple syruping this year was a rock star year for maple syrup. I think they came out with over five gallons this year. They actually had to stop cooking it down at one point because they just couldn't do it anymore. So Pancake Day is coming up, and then our last big family event of the year is our STEM night, our science night. Always a huge hit. This year, we're collaborating with ECE, SMS, SHS, Douglas County Extension, the DNR, and Douglas County Sheriff to do. A variety of things. We've got a bike rodeo plan. We've got, ECE is going to bring out the boom truck. We're going to do egg drop, and of course, you know, the higher the better. So they take them all the way up in the boom truck and chuck them off the side and. Any questions?
How many new students are you bringing in next year aside from kindergartners?
Aside from, oh.
Like other, other.
Asking me a math question. Um, last check on the list was 57. But.
Does that include kindergartners, though?
That includes kindergarten. Yeah, that includes kindergarten. If you ask me, how many not kindergartners, I have to look at.
My next question, put you on the spot. Aside from transition night, is there anything unique or different that your school, your staff are doing for the. Let's say, like, superior students or any other new students coming into your school?
Um, we are reaching out to families. Like, our family engagement coordinator is already sending our newsletters to them. We already got them all hooked up with that. Lake Superior kids came, had some notes, all our staff wrote notes to the kids to welcome them to our building. It's a lot of little things like that. I mean, nothing big. We don't, you know, we don't have the pep band coming or houses or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing all of the schools doing the little interactions with the kids that are coming in has been really neat. I think everybody is doing a great job trying to transition those kids and make them feel welcome. So it's pretty fun to see.
Tomorrow night will be a good event, too. Yes, yeah. All right, Principal Fez, you're up. Feels like you were just here. You probably were.
We kind of hit the back end of the first, first circle. Good evening, everybody. Welcome, welcome to our new members and welcome back. Laura is good. I'm looking forward to working with all of you. A lot of things going on. I put a few of them up. Go ahead, love a little bit here as well. We've been working, you know, hard on our graduation rate, which is trending really strongly in the right direction. I wanted to highlight, it makes it like not a huge number, but in addition to having a pretty strong graduation rate already of last year, our teachers continue to work with. Obviously, the students who are in front of them day in and day out, and some of those students who didn't quite make it last year. We had five, five more grads to add to last year's graduating class, which. Is a testament to, to our staff, our teachers, and the students kind of figuring out, taking the upper opportunities to, to keep going. We're in May. We're counting it down here for, for our seniors, so there's a lot of, a lot of increased work going on with them, and you know, you see our teachers working hard every day to, to help those who maybe weren't as on track as they, they should have been at different times, but a lot of good things happening there. Along with that, I don't know if it's probably embargo, so I'll speak in generalities, but we haven't gotten our pre-ACT back yet, but our ACT data is showing a considerable leap. Moving back toward pre-pandemic type of numbers. So what our teachers and our students are doing in the classroom is, is having a big impact, and we're seeing things trend in the right direction there. One of the things I wanted to talk about, and there's a lot of different things going on as, in our building in terms of giving students opportunities to, to dig into careers, give them the post-secondary education. Lots of different avenues. Caitlin Noel is doing a great job, and we've had probably half a dozen different jobs and career fairs this year to expose our students. We have a number of other things going on. We just, Carrie Saunders just brought a group of indigenous students to the Twin Cities to look into medical careers, and. One of whom shortly after their return told her that that's in fact the direction they were going, which is, which was really cool and impactful thing. There's a number of them. Dave Ostagram, one of our credit recovery teachers, has brought students, students who, you know, college really wasn't on their mind or, you know, and brought them to, you know, fun like community college, brought, has taken them to Northwood Tech. Has brought them to look at some different science-based careers that don't require post-secondary education, you know, traditional college paths. So lots of things going on. Our staff's doing a great job of exposing our students and really looking into those different pathways as they, they finish up. The thing I think is a real big celebration in our building and again, speaking to our staff, our leadership teams. Professional development has really been staff-directed. I'll talk a little bit more about that when, when we get into our action steps. Our shared leadership team has, has really, you know, worked to connect with all members of our staff, figure out what our needs are. And it's, it's not me providing professional development or some outside person that we're hiring. It's our, it's our teachers determining what they need and what they want to, what they want to learn and dig into. And what's really powerful, it's our teachers who are providing those demonstrations and professional development for their colleagues. And I think, you know, when you look at who has credibility to people, it's, it's the person next door down the hall, and there's a lot of. Lot of awesome teaching going on in our building. So for our, for our teachers to have the opportunity to, to share and collaborate with their colleagues during that time, I think is, has been really good. We've done a lot. We've done a lot to hear where our students are at. We want, we want them to feel valued. We'll talk about that goal. A number of different groups from our advisory and PBIS committees have brought student salons. So when our advisory activities or PBIS. Activities are developed, those are being developed with principals, teachers, and students at the table, having discussions and kind of leading, you know, leading the development of that. So lots of, lots of good things, good things to talk about. I don't think our challenge is much different than what I stood before you a few months ago, but I think these are all interconnected. Mental health is, I think, the one that connects, connects strongly the other two. It's, we have a lot of students who are having a lot of challenges and a lot of struggles, which, you know, directly impacts. Our teachers and, and what they're doing in the classroom. I think it, you know, it, it takes obviously their focus, their energy. I think, you know, our counselors, our deans, our principals, our teachers, our support staff are, are working really, really hard to support mental health. Challenges, some of which are bigger than what we're, we're equipped to handle. You know, I think, you know, it does, like I said, it does impact other avenues and other, other parts of the job for our teachers and our guidance counselors. And our deans and our principals. There is, there's a lot of, a lot of high need. You know, we're seeing, I don't have statistics to say how many students one year versus the next, but it does seem like substance use and substance use challenges are, are ticking up, and we're seeing, we're seeing more students. Having those struggles and Jay Larson, our social worker is phenomenal. She's, she's one person. That's one component of her job, and that's the, that's the component of her job where she is, she's spending. Most of it is supporting students, supporting students in, in a lot of ways. Overall, our attendance rate has improved some, but the, the number of habitual truant students has, has remained about, about the same. Our overall daily attendance rate has, has improved. We're still seeing too high of a number of students who are missing a great deal of school, which, you know, obviously has a lot of implications in a lot of places. I mentioned, I kind of alluded to some other things. Our goal, first goal, is we'll increase the number of students earning class credit in each of their classes to 100% by the end of each semester. We want everybody to pass their classes and graduate. The goal is written that way so that we can monitor along the way and see how many students at any given time aren't passing a course. Who didn't pass a course that semester, so we're able to, you know, to track and to try to intervene. Some of the things we've done since, since I've been here, since I spoke to you last. As we moved into our second half of the year and our professional developments, all of our teaching staff, we completed a survey looking around classroom challenges, engagement challenges. Which our shared leadership team then took the results of those surveys to, to provide, provide avenues for professional development. We had on our February 16 date an UN conference, which basically allowed for groups, teachers to come together and to dig into some of the specific things. That they identified as challenges and learn, learn from research, learn from each other. We kind of went into a cycle of continuous improvement. We looked into, into strategies. Our staff implemented those strategies, reflected upon with the impact that they had within their classrooms and had an opportunity to reflect on, reflect on that. Said, we want all of our students to pass their classes and graduate. In '21, '22, we were at about 800 course failures per semester. So that was numbers of course failed. So, you know, one student has seven classes if they fail all seven of them. Seven was the count towards that 800. In '21, '22, there was about 800 course failures per semester. We, this first semester of '23, '24, had about 400 students. As I, as I look specifically at those, about 330 of those 400. Failures of a class were students who were habitually truant. Our students who, when they're there, when they're showing up, our teachers are getting them where they need to be. Obviously, when, when they're not there, that's a challenge, and, you know, we've got to continue to, to try to improve in that area.
But 400 is the number of courses, right?
Number of courses failed. So like I said, 300 and something of those were ones, students failing six or seven courses because they, they weren't there. So yeah, that's the total of you. I think it's more than this, but if, you know, if each kid took five classes, it's probably higher than that. On, on average, you'd have 6,500, 7,000 courses being taken. 400 of those resulted in a failure. Working, working toward, you know, addressing those as well. Students who do, who didn't earn credits, you know, a credit recovery program. You see, 21, 22, we didn't have dedicated credit recovery teachers during during that time. Our students made up about 100 class credits. Last year, you know, with with our credit recovery, we made up around 400 credits during the the school year. We're probably, we're on pace and we're 300 and something and change, it changes every day. But we're on pace to be right around that 400 credits recovered again this year. With staffing challenges and reductions, we've worked, we've worked to create a schedule in which, well, it's not one individual dedicated credit recovery teacher, as opposed to five hours a day in each core area of credit recovery. We will be offering next next year, three hours a day in each of our four core areas in credit recovery to hope to continue to to catch and support those, you know, if they don't don't pass it the first time around.
Teacher. First of all, this is amazing. What a success already. I know we could, obviously we want.
Yeah.
Great. So how many staff would you say are involved in this work specifically?
Hundred, all of them. Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's the fact that, you know, the fact that we're ceiling, we're seeing half as many failures in the first place is is a result of what we call tier one core instruction. You know, and continuing to to look at our systems and how we support, how we identify students who are early, who are in need of, are in danger of falling behind and failing. You know, we connect with counselors and families and principals from the teacher perspective. So, yeah, I mean, I, all teachers are responsible for for that that number.
And if other time approximately would go to something like this? I suppose it depends on what topic it is, but.
You had some. Absolutely does indeed.
We have, in our, using Esther Funding, we have, if you look at the credit recovery side of things, we had a core area teacher for math and English, associate science. That that was their job.
Right.
You know, that those positions are going away, but moving some things around, some some a few fewer students here and there. We're going to be able to offer 60% of that. We're going to be able to offer three hours a day in each of, well, each of the core areas.
Thank you. Plus, you've got, you've got folks who oversee the online program. You've got our social worker, our counselor, and they're all.
Counselors, teachers, counselors.
What is that first or the?
Advisory, our advisors during, yeah, it's during, between third and fourth period where you're checking in, you know, academics checks and things. So I'm not being flippant when I say it's everybody. Those numbers are are improving because because everybody in our building is working.
I think Crystal wanted to add something.
Another reason he said everyone is that something newer to the system in the past few years, is when a student fails a class, the teacher of that class has to identify the specific standards that the student didn't meet. And then those are the specific standards that get communicated to the credit recovery teachers. That's how they work on a credit recovery. So every teacher has a responsibility.
Yep.
If a student fails their class and figuring that part out too.
So if they're doing really well in one section, then.
Yeah, that's, they could have, they could have failed the course because they didn't show evidence in one of the four standards.
Right.
And then within credit recovery, they're able to address that standard.
Excellent.
And their credit.
Thank you.
Our second, our second goal, increase the number of students feel valued within our school community to 100%. Things we've been working on, some of those action steps, improving family communication, including emphasis, reaching out for positive things and just making those contacts with, contacts with families. Surveying our students to see where they're at, how they're feeling. I mentioned in the celebrations briefly, Student Voice, bringing students to the table and for advisory for PBIS. Our Spartan spin has kind of taken the lead in organizing. We're right in a cycle of what we're starting right now with an advisory times where all students were asked if they would like to participate in some student voice, kind of like focus groups, for lack of a better term. Our teachers, we're all given the opportunity as well. So we have, we have teachers and students now sitting together, sitting down and talking through what's working, what can we improve. I think, you know, bringing bringing the student voice to to that and having them help us solve some of our challenges is powerful. It engages them. It's one of my own personal goals and why I like like the high school level so much is I think my job and our job as high school educators is to empower students to find their voice and to solve problems. And it's pretty cool. What our teachers and our teacher leaders have created these forums and opportunities for for our students to to sit down with them and to work through some things. We're seeing, we've seen some increase that our students are feeling valued. We will survey again once before the end of the year. And I think what we've done here with some of the student voice work is some of the most intentional, intentional forums to to really hear from students and to show that we hear them and value them. So I'm hoping to see a pretty significant increase from our middle of the year to to where we are here at the end of the year. That's what I have questions for.
Yes. Sorry. So the data on the truancy, you know, I really, this says something, which is a significant challenge, not only the district can address. So part of that falls on the district attorney's office because their office is involved when families are truant. The child protection services also gets involved when children are truant. I mean, something that would be helpful is like identifying what are the barriers for these kids? So maybe there's already data on that and I apologize if I'm novice about that. And how can we partner with these agencies to find solutions for it? We actually had, as part of statute, we have to bring our community group together countywide. And we did actually, and I think you represented the sheriff's office, right? We did that in the fall where we brought every, and we did that exact same thing where we had talked about, what are the barriers and what are the possible solutions? I'll share that report with with everybody again, so you can kind of see what came out of that. But that might be a good place to start from. Were there action items from that group?
Yeah, there were some specific recommendations out of that group.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And were they financially on the district or?
No.
Parties?
No, I think it was a community based, definitely felt like a community based problem and solution. Yeah.
Okay.
Let's, yeah, we'll speak to that. I agree with partnership. I think the numbers, the numbers of students that we are bringing forth who are in this, finding themselves habitually truant is is overwhelming, is overwhelming to our our county, community partners as well.
Yeah, I think a lot of it might be potential health.
Absolutely.
That I've talked to families about.
Absolutely.
And so then we have students suffering with mental health. And then I'm wondering about our staff's mental health and wellbeing because that obviously is very draining. You know, Jane does what she can, again, even just Jane herself. So I know we have employee assistance program, but are there other things being done to support our staff when we're seeing this significant mental health increase?
Yeah, that's, you know, what I, you know, I mentioned here at the outset. I think it's it's pulling all of our staff members, you know, and we, yeah, we have employee assistance. I think we we have a good group who supports one another, you know, and works well together. But as far as, you know, major programs or things, I worry about our staff. I worry about, you know, I think the job gets bigger every year from teacher to dean to principal to counselor. I think it continues. There's more and more. I think the mental health side of it has has really been a major increase. I think, you know, we've done some things with with training of our staff and training of our students and mental health first aid. I think are are some great steps, but, you know, we need more.
Data piece on attendance. I also think that as our, many of our schools have attendance as one of their CIP goals and the research around attendance nationally post COVID has been dramatic. And I think we're very much nearing, our community is nearing national trends around truancy and attendance. Even though it was always a concern, I think it has.
Yeah.
It has.
Absolutely.
Even more significant and we are not any different than most places right now.
Yeah. And while they're obviously connected, I think high school truancy probably differs some from elementary truancy.
Yeah, I see.
You have different needs. You know, causes.
The road jobs is in Jackson, there's cars, you know, they can, you know, they can get robbed or they can be.
Yep.
They can get to school but not go to school, you know.
It does vary.
You know, the, I think the calendars are so doggone heavy. You know, Kim alluded to what's going on at her school. Aaron, you got a lot of stuff going on. We've got that Spartan manufacturing Wednesday at 3:30. There's still a number of concerts and.
It's a very busy time of year.
Very busy time of year. It's amazing what.
I don't know if Aaron ever leaves before nine o'clock, right? Yeah.
I don't sleep much, but yeah, I spend a long time there.
But there's, there's one thing on our mind, of course, that's May 31st. So your charge is to make sure that it's sunny that evening, 65 degrees.
No wind.
And no lake wind.
Yeah.
I've already researched. In case we need to get there. It'll be another beautiful night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
I'd like to go to Spartan Fiesta.
It was awesome, isn't it?
Or maybe it was this week, last week.
Last week.
Great. But I also want to highlight the senior, junior senior projects that same night to be able to display showcase what they did and it's a great idea. I think that started last year maybe.
Yeah, we've been trying, Caitlin's done a really nice job. We've been trying to connect those senior project presentation nights to nights where where other things are going on in the building. So then you get a lot of, you know, casual, oh, I came to came to check out the Fiesta of the Arts Show, but I'm going to walk through and I think it's been really positive for our students. And Caitlin's doing a really nice job with coordinating. I think one, in the wintertime, we had, I don't know, three or four different games. It was one of those double header kind of nights and volleyball, things like that. And it was going on, it was awesome. These kids just had people flowing in and talking to them all night long. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Aaron.
Next, we do have one action item, consideration of overnight field trip requests from Michael Hart, for eighth grade students to attend Washington DC and New York City during spring break of 2026.
And he can do approve. This evening in case anybody has any questions.
A second, next motion.
Motion in a second to approve the overnight field trip in the spring of 2026.
And this is an annual trip. You guys take every spring break. Yeah, how many years have you done this?
So we've been doing this for probably close to a decade, took a couple of years off for COVID. This will be my second time leading, third time going at, remember Mccone's daughter go next.
I'm chaperoning with you.
Next year.
It's so fun, so much walking, so much walking.
It is. But I want to get ahead of the game, get it in the hopper so that parents have an extended amount of time to pay for it, so the payments are.
When is your information session for parents for this?
So my my plan is to hand out flyers at the the open house in August.
Okay.
And then have my.
That's why you want to do it now.
Yeah.
I think this is the year for my kid, my gosh, okay.
Yeah, and then I'll have the parent meeting in October and then parents can sign up and then it's, then it'll be in March.
So by approving it now gives you information, be able to push out an open house in the fall.
Yep, absolutely. Any other questions?
It just always looks outstanding. It's really neat to see you guys pack it all in, you see, you maximize everything.
We have a lot of fun, we like, we're busy, like tour companies, grades. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that all those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. And you had no discussion items, so we'll bond to our committee agenda reports. Dave Olson with our budget insurance committee.
Okay, we got a couple informational items. With in Larson Allen LLP presentation on the 2022, 2023 audit and financial statements.
We're trying a little super option here. It should be.
Cross my fingers, can you hear me okay?
Looks like you guys have been doing a lot of work behind the scenes here for the last 40 minutes. I was going to say, you almost fell there.
So you can hear me okay? Thumbs up?
We can hear, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, are we in the right person?
Hold on, hang on. Who do I need? We need.
We're the wrong.
Okay.
We'll get you Brock in a second here.
Okay.
Rob, don't pick your nose.
Oh, you're up.
So do you want to, what we're going to do is put the audit report, the audit summary up on the screen. Yeah, I say into the first one there.
All right, once it's up there, I'll start walking you through it. I can't see that on my end, so you're gonna have to give me a little cue there.
It was on your email. Is that what you're looking for?
Oh, yeah, it's turning front on us.
Yeah.
Should say, meeting handout, 2023 audit meeting handout PDF.
Yep, we're pulling it up right now. So what Brock's doing is he's going to go over the audit. So when you guys get the actual, the final audit that we posted out there, it's 97 pages or some huge amount. What he's going to go over is just, he'll overview how the audit went. One thing to keep in mind is a, you know, a little bit of a spoiler, you're going to get to the end and it's going to say $1.3 million surplus that we had for last year. 750,000 of that was, that we didn't make a contribution, we actually made a contribution in July. So it wasn't made prior to June 30th. So it hits this year, the theory of what's going to happen, we're going to hit it twice. You don't have to pay it every year, but you should because you're going to pay that out eventually in the start of retirement and all the HRA contributions that are going to push out there. So it comes down to, we have a surplus of around, you know, $500,000, which is kind of standard when the report comes up right here. So Brock, if you want to jump into it, we got it up, we're looking at item number one.
Perfect, okay. Well, good evening, thanks for having me on here and thank you for all the help. Dave, in the last 40 minutes scrambling here, didn't think I'd make it. But we're all good, sat here, I'm Brock Guy and I'm the principal and partner in charge of your annual external audit. And I'm going to keep this to two pages and really quick, because I actually have another board meeting to get to here tonight. It's a village, they don't have any AV equipment, so I actually have to go there. But appreciate this option, gives me the flexibility. And I will start here on point one. Hopefully it talks about your audit report management layer and compliance up there, if you're seeing that. The audit report itself, as Dave said, it's 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 a long document. Typically don't spend any time on that on these meetings, give you the highlights instead here in the summary. But I will point out that you are going to receive an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level you can get technically with school districts. That's all DPI will accept. So you have to work through all the issues to get it to what some people refer to it as a clean opinion. And you indeed will have that for 2023. That isn't to say you don't have some internal control things that we do report. It's part of what's called, commonly referred to as findings. And it's common that most, if not all, school districts have some findings. And sure enough. And it's common that most, if not all, school districts have some findings and sure enough, you do, you do have three, two are, uh, the first one, uh, item one and two. Limited segregation duties and material audit adjustments, uh, nearly all my clients have those two things, they're more of an annual reminder. And, uh, uh, yes, no, kind of an answer thing when it comes to a management letter. First one just means you don't have a crew of CPAs on site that handle everything for you on a day-to-day basis and a bunch of them. You have a limited number of resources, people that you, that are in your finance office. And they do what they do on a daily basis and some, sometimes they have more than one responsibility, so, and that in turns from an auditor, uh, point of view. We, we call it limited segregation duties, we rely on controls that you guys have at, uh, the board level, for example, when you do your approvals, you do a lot of reviews and approvals. That helps tremendously, that mitigates the risk. Uh, but doesn't eliminate it, so that's why that's in there. Second one, material law adjustments, if we post, uh, proposed adjustments to your books. And they're over certain dollar thresholds which we calculate, it's an automatic thing and like I said, most of our clients receive at least several journal entries from us. The last one, that one's unique to this year, uh, possibly in twenty-four as well, cause we're helping out a little bit with your bank reconciliation process. We helped you get caught up through the end of twenty-three and at least the first half, I believe, of twenty-four here, so. Um, it, it's one of those things where, uh, it's well defined in the, in the standards, if, if we do help out, we can certainly do that, it's more after informational. And you will take that responsibility on going forward, so that's your corrective action on it. Uh, compliance, that section right there, you'll notice there's a sentence, no findings reported, a couple of years ago, you might've had something. Uh, this year, there's nothing, we review grants and contracts, things of that nature, in addition to the numbers, and there's nothing to report, which is perfect. Uh, that's what you strive to get there. All right, let's talk about the numbers, the bottom half of page one, as Dave mentioned, spoiler already, uh, took, took my thunder, but, uh. You did receive, if you go to the second to last row, change in fund balance of one point three million to the positive, to the good. And that's normally a good sign, right? Came out ahead of the, uh, ahead of the game, revenues exceeded expenditures. Um, I, I maybe fill in the gap there a bit, part of it was the contribution and the timing of that to the OPEB trust, Fund seventy-three. That is an expense in Fund twenty-seven and ten, uh, which you're seeing here is combined for reporting purposes. Um, there's an additional piece to it too, so you got more income back than you were planning on as well, cause there's this thing, like, it, it's also tied to OPEB. Because you have an OPEB plan and you have this Fund seventy-three trust, you've got the separate investments that handle funding your, your OPEB benefits. You do this accounting exercise at the end of the year, which involves paying some money back to the governmental funds of ten, twenty-seven and, and I believe fifty in your case. So it's called an implicit rate subsidy. Uh, you are paying more for premiums, cause you have retirees that are allowed to participate in your plans, getting a little technical on you here, but. DPI regulation says whether you make a contribution or not to Fund seventy-three, there's always gonna be a kind, uh, implicit rate subsidy payback. A portion coming back and that was five hundred and twenty-three thousand, so that's essentially the gap there, right? The seven hundred thousand for the contribution, you didn't make. Timing wise during the year plus another five hundred coming back. Uh, you take that out of the equation, you're pretty much a break even for the year with everything else, so I think everything kinda went, uh, pretty much as planned for you otherwise. All right, we'll get on to page two. And here for, uh, items three, four and five are all your other funds where activity has been taking place. Uh, special revenue funds, by and large, very consistent with the prior year, not a lot of change in, from the end of twenty-two to the end of twenty-three. Uh, maybe the unusual item in there is maybe in your food service fund between twenty-one and twenty-two. Would have explained this last year where you had more federal dollars coming in, you probably remember those federal dollars coming in through grants. That really beefed up a lot of, uh, food service funds across the state and you experienced that as well, but otherwise in, to twenty-two to twenty-three, very consistent. Debt service funds, item number four, that one, you did have a decrease. In your year-end reserves from twenty-two to twenty-three, may or may not remember, but not only in addition to your regularly scheduled principal and interest payments during the year. You also set aside some money called, uh, through a process called cash defeesence. So you took money on hand to pay off future debt service, which will ultimately help with, uh, not having to come up with the resources down the road. When it's originally scheduled to be due, but also save you some interest in the, in the, as well. So a lot of strategies there, you just use some existing cash to pay down, uh, debt in advance and that's why you got, you're seeing that decrease here this year. Capital projects funds, not a lot of activity there, Fund forty-nine had no change at all, you do have some resources, seven point nine million. Set aside to use for future capital projects, it's resources you accumulated over many years in the past. So that's available to you for future capital needs, um, you have a separate fund, a strategy that DPI introduced a number of years ago. Where you had to fund it for five years, that's Fund forty-six, that's your long-term capital improvement trust fund, so you had been funding that for a while. And then you actually used about seven hundred and fifty thousand during twenty twenty-three and yet, that's why you see a bit of a decrease there. Uh, completely available to you, three point seven million now, going forward into twenty twenty-four. Last thing I'll cover is your long-term obligations, your debt items. Uh, mentioned before, you had a pay down of premium, um, on your debt service, on some advanced. Ref- uh, refinancing, uh, cash defeasance, sorry, and your regular scheduled principal plus interest payments as well. So that makes sense why your gen- geo bonds dropped from eighty-four million down to seven-three, about a ten million dollar drop there of pay down on your debt. Um, and you have just a little bit of notes left on there. The last row is a measurement against your statutory limit of how much debt you can have at any time, that's tax-supported. Naturally, when you pay down your principal, your percent of that usage of that capacity goes down as well, so that's a good sign. Uh, and now you look at it, you're, you're financing your capital through debt and you're paying that down, so you're down to twenty-four percent, meaning. Plenty of capacity should you need to borrow, uh, for any reason really, in the short term or long term going forward. All right, so that was pretty quick, that was all the comments I had prepared for tonight, uh, any questions? Happy to try to answer those here. For you.
Brock, we appreciate you putting that together. Hear me?
Yep.
Appreciate you putting that together and getting that for us. Um, what's the soonest you can provide an audit for us? In, in the future, like next, the next audit?
Yeah, absolutely, so typically we'd be on a timeframe of a December issuance, right around that, uh, December fifteenth timeframe. Um, a couple of things come into play with timing, Dave, you can chime in here too a little bit when I'm, when I wrap up, just some, some challenges on your end there in the finance office. But, uh, uh, realistic timeframe on audits now is anytime after the beginning of November. In the past, if you go back maybe six, seven years, you were able to get those things done is early as September. But now we're waiting on the state every single year for some, uh, some pension and life insurance OPEB information, that we don't actually get till. Uh, uh, data for that until the end of October, so now your timeframe has shifted back a little bit, so compresses that timeline to when there would typically be issued to do. There in December, uh, we're here in May, it's much later, it's the last district I have, to be honest. Uh, but, um, I think I'm seeing a lot of good signs going forward too, and Dave, you can chime in here, a little bit of timing on your end.
Yep, and I think the biggest thing is, uh, this. We're auditing stuff that the previous business manager did, so it's always harder to audit somebody else's stuff. Um, we had a hundred percent turnover in the business office, so that's where we're running into a lot of issues is, um. Who's in Jeanette really, really, really hurt, uh, because that's the person that did the day-to-day stuff, so that, it required a lot of. Corrections we made on my side, um, Brock has really helped out, especially in the cash reconciliation side of it, to make sure, like, our numbers are right. It's just the numbers are in the wrong for a bucket and that's where we have to stop wrong, so, um, yeah, the goal is to, uh, get this audit done much quicker. Because.
The goal then for next year by December? That's the goal?
Correct.
Okay, the goal.
Is that possible, bro?
Yeah, it's completely possible, yeah, a lot of my districts are, are issued between that, uh, well, you got the holidays in there, so. Basically bracketed between the two holidays there, between the end of November and late December is when nearly all this districts, uh, are issued.
So David just finished this one and now he'll start the next one tomorrow.
Appreciate Brock and us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Brock.
Any follow-up questions, run them through finance there and we can help you out there too. All right, you guys have a good evening.
You too. Um, so I'm just gonna go through it at a high level to, cause I needed to understand it better. So the big thing is, they didn't have any material or large findings, when he's going in there and saying the limited segregation. That's the standard talk for somebody that's. They can do E, and kind of chat and all this stuff, you're always gonna find that.
I think they've mentioned it every single year I've been here.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's standard, because you can't have enough people.
Yeah.
Um, I would say this audit was not fun, um, it's quite an experience. I went into August, cause this is when I started in August, anticipating terrified of this thing, because when we, like, I'm, I'm a certified internal auditor. And I know what people want to do whenever I came in here, um, this audit isn't, uh, it, it's gonna get better, a lot better next year, it isn't what's. It isn't as bad as what I thought it was gonna be going into it, it did take a lot of time, um, to get through it and our goal is to be, it's on. As well, so, yeah, push to get it done quicker. And then, yes, I really have to thank HR and, uh, come in and detail back there, because, uh. They really have to, they pull a lot of stuff in for the retirement, so, but again, so it, numbers at the end kinda comes down to, so the surplus of one point three, but it. Actually goes up to zero. And it was really sad, it's retirees, um, costing more because causing their health insurance to go off, so that's for the. Again, um, my goal eventually, even on the thing in show where we've had a surplus. Think, um, I think strategy wise, we also look at not having surplus, or we're not gonna be, it's a guess of us, it's gonna. Super tight, but even after that fact, uh, a surplus effect's an EQA and you wanna minimize, you wanna maximize that as much as you can. To minimize the tax on that side, there's a whole bunch of strategies that need to take place in the backend, which is something I think as a district. Uh, or pay more taxes, so.
No, it's a gentleman, gentleman Rob on there.
Yeah, he's, he's next.
Yeah, we have another present. David has a big agenda tonight.
One more informational item, the Fund ten revenue and expenditure reports, anything of note?
Oh, no, it's standard, the only thing I will be bringing to you guys. I mean, June is a resolution for fair term early, um, as I've said a whole bunch of times, the cash flow for public schools is very unique and then you get. Chunk of money and then you have no money for a long time, you have to figure out how you can do that. Every two weeks we're pumping out two million dollars in payroll, so like right now I have, I think I have nine sitting in the bank. Uh, that's gonna be gone pretty quick and worried because our, should say worried. Overly cautious because our EQA payment is like a day after a payroll payment. And that number's just gonna be really tight, um, it's not what he says, it's. We wanna have a lever in place in case something happens, so we need to get to that. As people say, the, the thing that keeps business managers up at night is not making payroll, uh, and they're making a lot of leverage in the backend, in case.
It's like a line of credit kinda thing?
Yeah, exactly, line of credit, um. They're, they're ready to go back to, finally, just needs, but their business partner with us, they jumped on her anyway.
That's great, thank you for being prepared and just cautionary.
Okay, um, action items, gifts, grants and bequests, admin recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in April twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Thank you to all the donors, especially for the online grab party.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. And now our other action item, our other guests, CISA twelve shared services contract. Administration recommends approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five shared services contract with CISA twelve and the amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Compared to the cost for twenty-three, twenty-four was one hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Motion to approve.
Any further discussion?
I just wanna reiterate the reason for the increase, eh, I've shared this with the board already, is due to increased special education needs and so they're. Specific to special education costs.
That's right, yeah.
Additional forty thousand.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Can I ask, so I know that a lot of CISA twelve is for the smaller schools, I know we use them more minimally compared to those schools. What kind of fees are they paying?
The same.
They really are.
So, so for example, um, they'll. They'll identify, the, there's, there's one staff person, say for a specific, I don't know, like, um, let's say occupational therapy, although we don't contract for occupational therapy. They'll have a salary and if five districts need that person, they'll bill that, they'll bill the salary and benefits for that person across those five districts evenly. Or based on how they serve.
Okay.
Yeah.
Also, I know, eh, they provided in the past, when we, um, had the, the big chunk of the dollars we had to help pay for. Um, their relocation, uh, they showed like how much each district was like.
Yeah.
Using the services and stuff, so I know, uh, they'd be happy to provide that if you need it.
And we primarily utilize them for special education itinerant services, for services that we don't have staff. Employed. Is there anything else you wanna say about that, Dina? Okay. Okay.
Was this number, the number in the budget for next year?
It will be.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have one discussion item, School Perceptions, Presentation on Conducting Operational Referendum Survey.
The weekend.
Oh. No, we don't.
Thank you.
We don't, because we want everybody, again, you wouldn't have to choose not to take this survey, we want everybody. To be able to say, yes, I have an understanding of the plan, that way nobody gets to the board meeting and say, you didn't ask me, or I didn't know what was going on. Everybody will at least get one copy of the survey and I'll show you how we do that. We don't do phone surveys, you can take the survey on your phone, but we don't initiate the survey through a phone call, because if you're anything like me. Um, I get two calls a day about a car warranty for a car that I got rid of fifteen years ago, from, pretty sure I've never had a warranty, so I don't enter my phone. I don't know anybody that does, and I think everybody's phone is getting smarter and better and really helps spam, without you having to do anything. So if it's not a recognized call, your phone will already let you pick it up, so you can take the survey on your phone, but we don't initiate that through a phone call. So how does it work? Um, we will work with you, um, if you have a good mailing list that you use the district already to potentially send a newsletter. Or if you have just a good updated mailing list, uh, not just for the city of Superior, but all municipalities that feed into your district, you can do that. Only you can work with some of our lending partners, uh, but we wanna get a good list of all residences, including renters. Uh, and everybody gets at least one copy of the survey in their mailbox. Once I get that tangible, physical thing in my hands, I have two options as a survey taker. Um, I can take it online with a unique survey access code that is printed on the front page of the survey. So that serves as our gatekeeping function, it means that I can certainly have my voice heard, but my voice is not allowed to be any louder than anybody else's. Because once I hit submit using that code, it explodes and goes away, so if I try to enter that code again, the system will basically say, thanks for nothing. So it'll just shut your survey once. Would recognize however, that there are certainly multi-generational households, spouses don't always agree. Uh, so we will always provide you extra paper copies and we always provide you extra survey access codes. So that if somebody calls in and says, hey, I wanna take that survey too, uh, I vote here, the answer is always you, Ben, the more respondents, the better, the more accurate your data will be. But at the very least, we can ship one to all residences within your district offices. If I don't wanna take it online, um, I can fill out that paper survey to my heart's content. Uh, and return it directly to School Perceptions in a business reply envelope, but we will enter that data on your behalf to maintain confidentiality. Um, really rough breakdown, we find it to be about a thirty-seventy split, uh, about seventy percent of folks will choose to take the survey online. But it's still north of a quarter in any given community, you know, folks who return the survey to us through a paper. Uh, so I certainly don't wanna minimize the importance of having something tangible in everybody's mailbox. Uh, and even folks that take it online, we, we kinda hear anecdotally that people will read the survey on paper and make their choice online, they go back to the paper copy and make their choice online. So that, uh, that paper copy can be pretty important for people who are, who actually wanna leave it on a calendar and have themselves remind. uh, that paper copy can be pretty important for people who are, who actually wanna leave it on a calendar and have themselves remind themselves to do it. What do surveys look like? Um, this may be the most unsatisfying answer that I have for you all night, but it, it, it's really, it depends. You know, we don't have a, a stock set of surveys that we will pull out and say, oh, you're just like X or are you something like next, you know, we really wanna make sure we listen to your needs and what you need and, and craft a story that makes sure it sounds like you and Superior and not like School Perceptions and SLE. Uh, so all of them are based on what you need, but there are some general patterns in how the survey is laid out. Um, I'll show you a couple of what we call our opening letters in just a minute. Um, but just going back to how do I take this survey? Um, regardless of how your survey looks, regardless of the needs that you find yourself in, a box that looks something like this will appear on the front page. Uh, so if I do choose to take it online, I can load it into this URL and then within that red box, that's where that sixteen character uh, code will be. That's the one that allows me to take the survey, but only take it once. Uh, and then directions to take it uh, via paper and certainly we have some uh, uh, translations options available for you as well, should you have a need for that in your community. So this is always pretty much gonna look the same regardless of where you are. But the opening letters may not. So we always like to begin our surveys in as few words as possible. Like I thought this opened here a little bit. I thought their opening letter was a little long. I lost, but this is what their opening letter looks like. And we really wanna cut to the chase as soon as possible for folks. Um, what is this thing that's landing in my mailbox? Who is it coming from and, and what is it that they want me to do? What, what problem are they asking me to solve by nature of, of asking me to give them survey data? So in Stoughton's case, um, they wanted to thank the community for the ongoing support of their schools, uh, but really made clear that they're facing a, a significant financial challenge because of a lack of predictable, sustainable funding. Uh, they noted that past budgets from the state didn't provide any additional money for students. And the additional, uh, or the recent state aid, uh, the recent state budget passed last year out, but it wasn't enough for Stoughton to cover the inflationary costs that they were experiencing. You know, whether it's for transportation or utilities or compensation or X, Y and Z things. So they made it clear to the community, we have several options to address this problem, but we aren't gonna do anything until we hear from you through this community-wide survey. Uh, we need your potential box of operational referendum. Uh, at this point, for districts that are unfamiliar with that, we can certainly define what an operational referendum is. Um, voters in Stoughton were no stranger to that, uh, so we didn't have to do as much work there. Um, but we wanted to be clear, you know, again, as few words as possible, what do you want me to do and, and why do you need my help to do, do a survey? Another example, that might be Wilmont. This is a little bit more my style in terms of an opening letter. Doesn't mean there aren't additional details as the survey goes on about how you might find yourself in a budget crunch. But at least in terms of an opening letter, that's not really the goal of it yet. The goal of the opening letter is just to get to the chase of what do you want me to do and why. It's kind of that part. Um, Wilmont Union, um, they had failed a couple of referendums. And so they made it clear, like, look folks, we've already cut twenty two staff and other expenses, you know, we've already made these efforts. Uh, in their particular case, the state budget had cut their funding even further. So their problems were compounded. They had even more difficulty paying their staff, uh, especially trying to keep staff and attracting, recruiting staff to their district as opposed to leasing them to nearby schools and local businesses. Uh, and they also had some building needs that were separate to their operational needs. But their goal here was, hey folks, we're gonna explain our challenges. We're gonna get your input on what to do next and your feedback will remain confidential. So. And then again, they, they talked a little bit more, um, as the survey went on about what is it that they're exploring? How much would those plans cost? Does the cost vary by year? But this was kind of just the opening hook though. What do you want me to do and why? Um, we also wanna make sure that you can slice and dice this data, um, as needed. So I happen to pull this, we worked with, uh, we worked with Drummond recently last fall, we worked with Drummond, so I tried to drag somebody that's a little bit weird in your neighborhood. Um, these demographics will help you understand whether there are pockets of support, there are opposition or confusion in different areas of your district. So we certainly wanna make sure that we're hitting all residents regardless of their age, you know, sixty five plus, eighteen to twenty four, regardless, we wanna make sure that we're hearing from everybody. Um, especially as you can imagine, in, in Drummond, um, all residents has got the survey, but we wanted to focus on voters. The, the folks that control an election within their district boundaries. So we made sure we asked, is your primary residence, in other words, can you vote here or are you voting elsewhere? Uh, we wanted to look by municipality, we wanted to know how staff were feeling, we wanted to know how parents were feeling. And then very much that all important group of no-no, that the non-parents, non-staff, because they're the biggest chunk of your community. And we really wanted to isolate those voters and see how they were feeling. Um, and then very often in a, in a survey as well, we will ask, how do you wanna be communicated? You know, we might put things out on Instagram or we could, we might have a live YouTube stream, we might have the local newspaper. But are we sharing things in a way that you wanna hear from us? So we had folks put Instagram on here, for instance. And they kind of said, well, we're not doing it. If, if we started an Instagram page or anybody wants to add it? And some folks have said, yeah, especially parents, they wanna know what's going on, you know, the, the science fair or the basketball games. So they've actually started an Instagram because folks have said they wanna learn from them that way. Um, in other communities, it's known, you know, I wanna learn about what's going on to the newspaper and stuff is sent to me. But at least this will give you some indication of, of gain for your folks. How do people wanna learn about what's going on at school? Um, after completing more than nine hundred community projects over the last, I guess now is the year twenty three, um, we prove it to be highly predictive. It, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna hear what you wanna hear, but it does mean that we are very accurate. Um, so over the last, actually, I, I know this because I'll pray or just ask for this information in RFP. Since twenty seventeen, we worked with uh, over half the school districts in Wisconsin, specifically on community surveys. Uh, if you extend to all twenty three years of our business, we've worked with about three hundred and ninety of the four hundred and twenty one school districts in Wisconsin. It's pretty unlikely we've worked, that there's a school district in Wisconsin that we haven't get more from. Uh, we don't always make people, you know, perfectly happy in terms of the data they get back, but we do stand on a, a couple of strong legs about what the data means. So for instance, um, we pride ourselves on being a conduit, a voice from taxpayers to you. We also pride ourselves on being fan salespeople. We, we are not trying to persuade the community to vote in a certain way and, and if that's somebody that you're looking to do that work, that, that's not us. And I wanna be very clear about that. Instead, what we do is we wanna collect data from your community and say, yep, the community is gonna support this plan or not. Uh, so in our world, a success is an accurate prediction. If the data is telling us that a potential referendum might pass and you take that plan to ballot and it passes, that's a W in our world. But the other side of that point is also true. If the data is telling us that a referendum is going to fail and a district takes that plan to ballot anyhow, doesn't happen very often, but it does sometimes happen. If a district takes that plan to ballot anyhow and it fails, that's still a win in our world. That is a success because that is an accurate prediction. What we said would happen based on a survey is ultimately what happens on election day. And that's what we're in the business of, of giving you is, is this plan going to be supported by our community if or when we put it on a ballot? And we wanna do that without persuading people. Nobody wants to be sold something, you know? If, if it comes across as too salesy in a survey, people pick it up and say, well, you already made it your mind. You already know what you're gonna do before you even were passed and that's really the way that people get mad. Uh, and outside of that, actually, it, no matter if it's the administrator or if it's you signing this as board members, it's actually unlawful for you to try to persuade people in your official capacity. So we're only information givers and information collectors. We, we are not the folks that will try to persuade people. General timeframe is a keep in mind. So regardless of whether you're looking at a November ballot or an April ballot or February or whatever the date may be, um, you are required to pass along your resolution, that language that's gonna be on a ballot, at least seventy days prior to that election day. So whatever date you're looking at, subtract seventy and the questions have to be in the county clerk stands by that date. We certainly don't wanna give your data back bumping up too close to that. We wanna give you at least several meeting cycles to understand, okay, what is the data telling us? If we need to change on a dime, we can. And you need some time to work with your school legal team and your school law partners to make sure that you're crafting the resolution and in those really intricate ways that, that uh, uh, that'll require an uptick. So in other words, if you're looking at a November referendum, we'd like to get your data back in about June or July. Then we have July and August to think about the data and get something on a ballot. Uh, if you're looking at April, we typically like to give people the data back that are on November, December or so. Um, surveys are open approximately six months prior to potential referendum date. Um, any longer than that and then the survey data can just get kind of stale. Too many things happen. Um, too many economic, economic changes happen where, you know, if you survey a, a year out, there's just too many things that could happen. We feel a little less confident in our prediction, but we have a lot of surveys out right now uh, with districts that are looking to, to maybe get something on the ballot in, in November. Um, so kind of working backwards, now I wanna work forwards for a bit. Um, a, a good number to keep in the back of the mind is eight weeks. So when everybody says, yep, this is exactly the survey that we want, uh, and everybody says, yep, send this to print, the day that printer gets a file and the day that you get data back is about eight weeks or two months. So we just said, uh, Cuba City and Catosi, their surveys to printer today, they're gonna get data back right around the mortgage line. Uh, the way that that shakes out is it's about two to three weeks for the printer to do their work and for it to float through the USPS bulk mailing system. And neither of those, we really, either I nor you have a lot of control over that. Uh, but it's about two to three weeks for that process to happen. Uh, it's about two to three weeks for the survey. We know that's kind of a sweet spot to maximize your response rates. And then we need about two to three weeks in the backend to, A, let some of those paper surveys come in uh, for those thirty percent that do choose to take it on paper, um, enter that data and get you a, like a clean digestible report for you to analyze on the back end. Uh, so that's how, kind of how we get to that eight week map. Um, and we can kind of move as quickly or as slowly as you want. Uh, and you know, if you kind of know exactly what you need, we can ship these out the door in about a week to a week and a half. Um, in fact, Cuba City, if you got that out of my mind, we shipped their survey out in about a week and a half. I think what they needed, that was an operational referendum. Um, they had had conversations with their board, they were coming up a failure in April and they kind of do what we need. So we really did the job. It'd be a lot of time to write their survey. So I recognize that's a lot of information in a very short period of time. So let me pause there. What questions do you have? Certainly take me back double slides if you need clarification on something, but what makes sense of what goes?
How many surveys are sent out and what voter lists are you using or how do you select your lists?
We don't use a voter list actually, because we wanna make sure that even if I'm not a, a voter right now, I still know what's going on in the taxpayer. So, um, either if you, sometimes districts have a mailing list that they already use. If not, um, we would want a boundary map from you or at the very least, uh, a, a printer can sometimes do this, but they'll actually like upload your boundaries. So not just the city of Superior, but all those like the town of Superior, for instance, and all those other municipalities. They will upload a map like this fancy dance USPS software that they have and then it'll spit up all residences, including renters and appeal boxes. So that everybody, at least all residences, get at least one copy in their mailbox. So we, we don't use a voter list.
So like twenty six thousand surveys?
That's often what happens. If you choose not to go that, so is that how many households you have within Superior?
That's just the city of Superior. So there's, that doesn't even include sorry, household, yeah.
So we've already actually Pat, I had Pat work on it already because we've sent out flyers before in the past for bus drivers.
Yeah.
He's already reached out to our person that we've used here and they've given us quotes and so they can give us options of, do you wanna hit every single person? Or do you wanna hit every single house?
Right.
You know, we wanna go to every single house. So they've already given us quotes. They're lined up if we decide to go that route, they're ready to, uh, to jump on.
So we could just select our own printer too, if that was the next question.
You know, we got a couple that we work with that know our process, but if you have something local, let's do it because that, that usually helps it out the door a little bit faster. So we have a couple if they don't, but if you have a local version, I'd like to, that's usually.
And the timeline I shared with you guys shows us finalizing the survey in the next week or two and being able to review the results in the July board meeting.
Yep, so it, it, it is a tight, tight timeline. Um, I just gotta say, whatever the numbers, you guys have all seen it. You know, ninety thousand next year, one four, four, seven, nine, that's what the numbers, the numbers are gonna be in deficit. So we have to figure out something, we have to do something. We're gonna continue down the road of where we have to make the cuts. Um, the reason we wanna bring in or I would like to bring in a company like this is, I, I can tell you what the numbers are, but I can't tell you how we can get this, how we can get the pulse of what the community feels. I mean, I've done it and it's, you know, I've done my own survey and it passed sixty to forty percent. Three out of five said yes. You guys all have different perspectives, diverse groups, know a lot of people. Um, it's also gonna be figuring out how we get that communication out to people. This survey, the one thing I really like about is, it's gonna hit townships. We have a very different type of community, city to come. I live out in the county, I know that, that group is way different and we're just gonna have to figure out where the, where's the hard to hit places of people that are like, no, I don't wanna do this. Um, I, I actually had a meeting with a high level, um, person who works for the city here and, um, they went, well, you know, it was on a different subject, they said, hey, your, our tax base could go up. That means you guys are gonna get more money. And I just almost slammed my head on the table because I'm like, that's not how it works and if you're at this level and you don't know that, that, that means very few people in the community understand how school finance works. So this is gonna be, School Perception is gonna give us the, the survey and tell us honestly, hey, you got a really good chance or you don't have a really good chance and if you really wanna pass, if you use a VA, you would, yeah.
Did he say what the statistics were for, um, accuracy with predictability?
Twenty four and a half percent.
Yeah, okay, there we go. Nick and I attended a session with the Batha Wazbee Convention and I knew it was a very high, yeah, I knew it was a high percentage, that's what I wanted to know, so.
Are you dicey in reoccurring and non-reoccurring or the, the sunset, um, referendums in that survey at all? It does sweep out that.
We have asked, yes. Um, it kind of all comes down to, well, A, a lot of people are gonna say, well, I don't know, you, you, you tell me what you need, I'll tell you whether yes or no. Uh, you know, we've asked recurring or non-recurring. Um, it's interesting data and it's kind of saying, do you wanna tax increase forever or a tax increase for a couple of years?
I think we're re, I think we're leaning towards non-reoccurring.
I think if you put that option in here, people are gonna pick one that sounds nice, but not enough.
That's right, Ed.
So you gotta stick to the one, you know?
The most logical thing that I hear when people, when people move forward with the recurring or they pass the question, they'll say, how do you know what your budget's gonna be in ten years?
Exactly.
And, and they're gonna, well, I don't, I don't even know what the state office is gonna do next year or the next budget. And it's a good question and it's a good question for folks to ask.
How many surveys are sent out and what voter lists are you using or how do you select your lists? That printer's helped. So like twenty six thousand surveys? That's just the city of Superior, so there's
every house.
Sorry, household, yeah.
So we've already actually Pat, had Pat work on it already because we've sent out flyers before in the past for bus drivers.
Yeah.
He's already reached out to our person that we've used here and they've given us a quote and so they can give us options of, do you wanna hit every single person? Or do you wanna hit every single house?
Right.
You know, every single house. So they've already given us quotes. They're lined up if we decide to go that route, they're ready to, uh, to jump on the button.
We get to select our own printer too, that was my next question. And the timeline I shared with you guys shows us finalizing the survey in the next week or two and being able to review the results in the July board meeting.
Yep, so it, it, it is a tight, tight timeline. Um, I just gotta say, whatever the numbers, you guys have all seen it. Ninety thousand next year, one seven, nine, that's what the numbers, the numbers are gonna be in deficit. So we have to figure out something, we have to do something. We're gonna continue down the road of where we have to make the cuts. Um, the reason we wanna bring in or like to bring in a company like this is, I, I can tell you what the numbers are, but I can't tell you how we can get how we can get the pulse of what the community feels.
Right.
I've done it and it's, you know, I've done my own survey and it passed sixty to forty percent, you know? Three out of five said yes. You guys all have different perspectives, diverse groups, know a lot of people. It's also gonna be figuring out how we get that communication out to people. This survey, what I really like, what is, it's gonna get townships. We have a very different type of community, city to come. I live out in the county, I know that, that group is way different and we're just gonna have to figure out where the, where's the hard to hit places of people that are like, no, I don't wanna do this. Um, I, I actually had a meeting with a high level, um, person who works for the city.
Um, I, I actually had a meeting with a high-level, um, person who works for the city here, and they go, well, you know, it was on a different subject, they said, hey, your, our tax base could go up, that means you guys are gonna get more money. I just almost slammed my head on the table, because I'm like, that's not how it works, and if you're at this level and you don't know that, that, that means very few people in the community understand how school finance works. So, this is gonna be, school perception's gonna give us the survey and tell us honestly, hey, you got a really good chance, or you don't have a really good chance, and if you really want to pass, these are the areas you would.
Did he say what the statistics were for, um, accuracy with predictability?
That's what I was gonna.
Yeah, okay.
There we go.
Nick and I attended a session with them at the Wasby Convention, and I knew it was a very high, yeah, I knew it was a high, um, percentage, that's why I wanted to know, so. Are you dicing reoccurring and non-reoccurring, or the, the sunset, um, referendums in that survey at all?
Yeah.
It does, we draft that.
We would do.
I think we're re, I think we're leaning towards a, a non-reoccurring.
I think if you put that option in there, people are gonna pick one that sounds nice, but.
Exactly, that's right, Ed.
So, you guys stick to the one, the not.
Right, right. Clearly, we're like wishing.
Right.
The concern is if you do have a non-reoccurring, though, and then it doesn't, if you go again, uh, in four or five years and you don't pass, you're in a real challenging situation, because you have used that, you've used that budget amount to balance your budget, so you're gonna have to make significant reduction. Yeah.
I think this is important, because Sarah Schubert-McConne and I have not been a part of any of these conversations, so that's why I'm asking these questions.
So, what is the strategy if the survey comes back negatively? I mean, is there a strategy to try to keep moving forward? Or, I mean, to, to random messaging a campaign, or?
I think that's a good thing for them, and not trying to give people a deciding.
Well, it will give us information, though, that we can use to decide if we need to change our strategy. I mean, that, that, that could be information that helps us determine how we have to change next steps. Do they provide us an opportunity to, um, ask the community at what levels they would approve?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the important information, yeah. So, is there a way, you know, a lot of people are gonna see these massive numbers on the surveys, and I think for a lot of people, it's more so, how is it gonna affect me personally, individually? What does that mean? Is it going to be a hundred dollars a year? Is it going to be? Do you do breakdowns like that so that people can better understand that? Right. There you go. Yes. Yes. Right, right, right. And then, I guess, one of the big questions, I don't like to ask it, just because I think this is necessary, that we do it, but I think it's important for probably community, um, you know, being transparent. How much is this gonna cost the district to do this survey?
So, when I look at it, um, since I gave a high estimate.
Yeah.
Of it up to ten. One thing that we're gonna do, I actually reached out to DPI to see if this would be something that would fall under ESTER bonds. But what it is, is when I go forward through this, I would take money that we have set aside, let's say, for our math teachers at the high school. I would take twenty thousand dollars out of those math teachers, transition it over to ESTER money, and take that budget and money and move that, just be into that.
You take allowable costs and record it.
Gotcha.
So.
Okay.
That way I can dump it into this year, because that's just the year that I can, the money I can spend.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, and it is a really tight timeline, but we've been working on this for quite a bit, having reached out, talked to districts, um, strategies, I've already talked to the law firm down later, as far as how those questions work. Um, worked with theirs extensively to look at it. There's a whole bunch of different strategies we can do on how we, uh, how we move, what the question would look.
Sure.
The big thing that are gonna help, help us with is getting that communication out to people to figure out, oh, we need to write that question up so people understand.
Yeah.
Mill rate, there's tax levy, there's all these other terms. How are we gonna get everybody to understand?
Yeah. David's working hard to figure out the, that better, the good, better, best, uh, you know, what, what that amount should be, that, so he's working on those right now. Is it, our mill rate, isn't it down from several years ago? And if we got it back up to where it was, again, if people, the community understood that we would be going to where we were, where we should be, and even what the, the state average is, because I know we're below that, if we even got to that, that would help us out.
It would, the parts that you're gonna get is, they don't care.
Okay.
The one where your tax levy is.
Okay.
Our mill rate is at six and a quarter right now. You know, that's eight, that's still less than what we had ten years ago.
Right, right.
But, they're just gonna say, well, now you're just gonna charge more money, the reason is your house is worse. It's just like when you go to McDonald's, and your quarter pounder now costs five dollars. You're paying the tax on that five-dollar quarter pounder, so you're paying that extra tax, that's a two-dollar tax. So, how we get that message out, and the big thing is, if we go forward with it, it is going to be all hands on deck. We are going to need the support.
Yeah.
Without it all, the board, teachers, staff, admin, students, I mean, I even do stuff for their referendum, where they're having students create videos. Already thought about, we gotta reach out to businesses out there, because they're the ones that have the big property, they own the big properties, so they're gonna get hit the hardest on it. It's all gonna be about communication, and we'll have to bring in another to consult with, and somebody who tells you, you need a campaign manager, because you are running. Um, so it is going to take a lot of work. Even just small discussions I've had with my teachers and staff, to be like, absolutely, you're on board, keep talking about it, so it's.
It's what is the alternative at this point? What's gonna happen? What do we cut next?
And that's the communication we have to figure out, how we get out to people.
Right. Yeah.
That's the hard part.
And, um, Lauren, Sarah, this is really the first conversation we've had formally about the referendum, so.
Other than that lady coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, yeah, she didn't share, yeah, but this is kind of the first time we've talked about what this could look like for us, so.
So, what is the next step as far as this is concerned?
So, according to my ref, my, my timeline, we need to finalize the survey questions, and we'll need the board to kind of give us our blessing on that. Ideally, would it, would Monday be a good time before Monday?
Uh, I mean, first of all, they want to make sure that we're good to continue with this, and I can sign the quotes, and let's go.
Yeah, David need, I mean, we.
Is there a formal action item, or?
No, this is just to, just want to make sure you guys are okay with us continuing to move forward with this conversation. We would then work through the survey questions. The goal would be to send out the survey after we get them finalized here in the next couple of weeks. That will allow you, um, that'll allow at least about three weeks for the survey to be conducted, and it'll allow you time in July to look at the survey results and give us time to change any of the questions or amend, um, moving forward. You would not have a formal decision to make until the August board meeting, you would have to do it in August, so.
Or are you okay moving forward?
Yep.
Nick?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. Nick? Yeah?
Yes.
Maybe yes.
Okay, so we can go ahead?
Yes.
And the questions, then, you'll come up? We want you to see them, he'll, he'll work with them on the questions, but ultimately, we want to share them with you, yeah. Is that okay? Okay.
One of the major misconceptions, uh, Rob or, or staff here is, um, about the buildings. Um, you know, and, whoa, you spent so much money on the, the buildings, the remodel at the high school, Cooper, um, you know, it, so that is something like, again, we're messaging, like, I'm wondering, I'm just wondering if we'd see feedback, depending on the questions that we put in the survey around that.
Good point, because I've already heard that in the district, my gosh. What's back in two thousand and sixteen, and we have this ninety-two million dollar referendum, you've already been at our doors.
Yep.
So, this has.
And ultimately, the money we use for building projects is different than what we use for operating.
Right.
Is that something, Rob, that you've dealt with? I'm guessing out of three hundred and ninety school districts, or whatever it was, um, what is that messaging? How does that change how people frame it?
Another part of it, kind of the downer part, is we also upgraded our facilities.
Yeah.
So, we have rough set in, we downed the middle school. So, it's probably the first or last operational referendum. We're gonna have to go for capital if we're gonna do it, unless we dump in so much money in this operational referendum that we can cover those costs, which, and.
Replacing roofs are very expensive and not a part of our annual budget, which we need to have a plan for that.
So, when, when people say, hey, you're not being fiscally responsible, you are being fiscally responsible. The way we were fiscally responsible is, we didn't replace roofs where we should have replaced the roofs. It's telling, now you're paying the paper, like, we kicked the can so long, um, we have to find a way to get that money. And that capital referendum cannot be used to keep the doors open, it just puts doors on hinges, so.
It was the same thing with the bus situation, we found our sunset, so, as a board, we need to stop taking that approach, yeah.
How do you do that? How do you plan for those kind of maintenance things when, I mean?
Well, we've been putting money away to Fund Forty-Six, that's, that's, that's one strategy, but it's, you know, it, when it's, when it's a large dollar amount, you don't want to pull a lot of money from your annual operating budget, away from kids, away from teachers, away from staff, when those are, you know, so you, it's balanced, and there's only.
Right, about not wanting a surplus and things.
Right, so.
And that's where you dump money into the front source. And that's where you see other districts that have gone to operational referendums, because they, they've upgraded their facilities. That's, that's why they ran out of money quicker than we ran. So, and then also, we just had that large operator, or capital referendum, so we're not gonna touch the Cooper, we're not gonna touch the high school. But, there's a part of the high school that's staying somewhere, but that's where it's just something where we have to keep them being, so let's say, this society, they're not gonna fund us, we're gonna recover at twenty, so just try and fix something out of the high school.
Right.
That's gotta be the other part of the message, when we get out to people. We did the best we can, and eighty percent of the districts already went out and got an operational referendum. We have to do it now, or we have to clearly define that there are gonna be cuts. I mean, that, closings of schools, that's how people save money, that's monopoly, so when we close, we gotta look at closing two schools. We gotta increase class size. You don't find any way to bring in revenue, then we gotta reduce expenses, how do you do that? People, unfortunately, eighty percent of our budget is people, that's where the cut has to take us. These cuts were broken this year, and without a change, they continue to be there.
Wait, is that, I think, um, outside Minneapolis, closed, I think, five, four or five schools? I mean, the tie.
Green Bay is closing a lot.
Yeah, the, the period of neighborhood schools, we're just gonna have, like, thousands of kids in one school, I mean, that's what the state's pushing us towards.
That's even happening in universities and colleges.
Yeah.
Anything else? That concludes my report.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our operations committee. No action items, no discussion items, one informational item, Bobby, you have thirty seconds.
Speaking of building.
Every ten seconds ago. Be here.
Okay, yeah. Things are good.
Nothing will grow.
Right.
Well, that's supposed to be my hype person, I thought you were gonna hype me up.
Want some walk-up music?
Um, good evening, board members, and welcome, Sarah, and welcome back, Laura and Nick. Just wanna go through some, some old information here, some of you've heard this before. Uh, we've got, I always seem to have the May board meetings, so we've always got new board members, so I, I kind of give a brief overview of what my department's like, and then we move into projects and what we've got coming up. So, as far as staff in my department, we've got myself, we've got a supervisor that supervises the custodial side of the house, and then we've got an engineer supervisor that supervises the engineer side of the house. We've got a secretary, and then we've got three engineer ones. Our engineer ones are a higher level of engineer, they have, um, higher boiler licensure to take care of those, those bigger, uh, boilers that we have at, uh, middle school, high school. And then we've got one district one that floats around and does building checks on the weekends, and also, uh, does repairs at a district level. Got eleven engineer twos, which are, they, engineer twos, they do, most of their duties are still custodial work, but they also do, um, building, uh, plant maintenance, as far as any of the, the maintenance that we do on our boilers and our equipment, HVAC, and, uh, systems like that. We've got twenty-eight and a half custodians. Uh, three maintenance workers, our maintenance workers, they handle a lot of the more complex problems at, at the schools, so if our engineer at that school, let's say, out in the elementary, uh, they're, if I, I'm just gonna randomly pick four corners. Four corners has one engineer, two, and a one custodian. So, two people take care of that whole building. If you can imagine cleaning up after all of those, those kiddos, um, it's, it's quite a challenge. So, whenever they're either swamped with something, or they've got something that's outside of their skill level, one of our maintenance workers will go off and assist, or to help with lifting, et cetera. We have one, um, skilled laborers in, in the district, it's a district painter. And that person, we did the math back when Gary Neamy was here, something like forty-four, forty-five years. If they painted a different wall each time, by the time they got done, it'd be about forty, forty, forty-five years. So, it's very important that we're also cleaning our spaces as we go. And then we got two stockroom workers, they handle a lot of the mail distribution throughout the network. Um, most of our packaging and shipments come into the stockroom at the middle school, and then they take and deliver them out from there. Some of our responsibilities and overview, we maintain over one million square feet of commercial building space, and we do that nightly. You know, they, a lot of work goes in, our custodians, they're, most of them are pretty happy all the time. Some of them, you know, it's, we're, we're getting that. Maintenance repair, replacement of all building systems, management and scheduling of all non-district facilities requests. So between Ella and Bria, the buildings and grounds secretary. Any, if you see our spaces being used, our exterior spaces or interior spaces being used at night, it's all done and handled and coordinated through those folks. We get the lovely task of snow removal for the district. Lawn mowing, project planning and management of facility improvement projects, distribution of district supplies, orders, parts, materials, mail. Maintenance and management at the Four Corners wastewater facility. Yes, we have a wastewater facility out of Four Corners where we have to treat our own sewage. When we go to Wasbo conferences, everybody's always shocked to find that out. Not many people get to have to deal with, manage the wastewater side of the house. We perform safety inspections. We do athletic field maintenance, striping and repairs. One of our maintenance workers, I said three earlier, two of them handle the district. We've got one that takes care of all the sports complex. So when that sport season's over with, we get him back to our department to use for snow removal for a couple of months and, and he's back over to work with Ella on our athletic facilities at the sports complex. And that nice. And then we've got our district key card system. So if you scanned in anywhere, all of that is programming in the background that's being done. Holidays, all of that stuff's put in. Sometimes we have holidays where we, we might be out of school, but we're still in session for the teachers. They still need their door, their, their badges still need to work and all that's handled behind the scenes. Quick review of our projects from last year. I like saying what, what we said we were gonna do last year again, so that you know that we actually followed through and did it. S H S restroom addition, that started last year in June. That turned out amazing. That contractor was amazing to work with. That was one of the simplest projects I've had since I've been here.
And it was on time.
It was on time. They were professional and it was.
It looked great.
It was great.
Yes.
Admin parking lot, as you can see, that's done. Four Corners Elementary waterproofing, we peeled back that berm, removed the, the waterproof membrane, reflat, reinstalled that, re-flashed that and got all that backfilled and seated. Looks pretty good. We had a major heat exchanger at the middle school that needed to be replaced. I got that done last summer, so business as usual on the heating side of our middle school. We had our critical, critical incident response mapping. That's all complete and was finalized, met with the fire department and the police department and the contractor last fall and went over that stuff with them. And let's see, our shops power for the high school, that was part of the Spartan manufacturing, giving them some extra power over there for some of that extra tooling machinery that they have. And then some various smaller projects. Our projects moving forward for this year is the Spartan Arena is gonna get a paint job over there. That's part of donation money. Changing rooms at the high school locker rooms, it's gonna give everybody a place to get changed in their appropriate gear for fire ed and, and sports. Part of, on the safety and security side of the house, we're going to install our room numbers. Our classroom numbers are gonna be on the exterior of the building. That way, in the event of emergency, if fire, rescue, or the PD need to get into that spot quickly, they're gonna know where they're at on the exterior of the building. So that's part of our safety plan. We're doing a walk-in freezer at Great Lakes. It's part of food service project. We got our admin flooring going on right now up in the, the front of the, the office here. We're doing just another area that we're converting over to luxury vinyl tile.
I don't know if I'd say luxury, it's not that.
It's not stained?
No.
You're right, we, we don't want to say luxury.
Yeah, I don't think it's luxury.
Yeah, we didn't spend a lot of money.
No.
No, we did not. It, it's one of the cheaper style tiles that gets glued down, it's, yeah.
Yeah, doesn't look like that.
The true term for it is L V T, luxury vinyl tile, but it's, it's not luxury, so.
I just couldn't get ticks or something.
We're currently planning the proper flows down of Lake Superior and getting all of our, anything that's usable out of there and what needs to stay, making sure everything's in good working order and ready to go for the future sale. That's gonna happen this summer. Sidewalks and curving is budgets allows, and then we've always got multiple painting projects as well as small projects. Some of our challenges, not gonna believe the number one thing is budget, right? Never, haven't heard that yet tonight, but it is and it will always continue to be one of our big issues with our, with my department. And that's because it's followed by number two, which is roofs. Middle School and Northern Lights, like it's been said earlier, are in, we're there. It's, it's time to start thinking about how we're gonna get roofs on, on these, those two schools. We're doing everything we can for good and maintenance-wise, repair-wise, and keeping up with it. It's rare that we have a leak that is long, that lasts very long, that isn't remedied fairly quickly, but it is taking up dollars.
Bobby, you said S M S and which other one?
Northern Lights Elementary.
That's right.
This is, this, this building's not, it's gonna be right in there. So when we're doing those two, it's gonna be of us to do this one as well. The other challenge we have is wastewater ponds continue to be a challenge. We just got our new permit. About every five to seven years, we get a new permit that specs out exactly what we've got to do and they put some more stringent requirements on it. We're trying to navigate through that. This is our first discharge under that permit that's coming up soon. Whenever our chemistry works out right and our tests come back good, we'll start that spring discharge. And last but not least, our staff retention, specifically in our custodial side of the house. That is taking up, it, it takes up just a massive amount of time and, and the hiring process and in the training side of the house. We've, we've got a high turnover rate and we, we start them at eighteen dollars and seventy-six an hour. Typically, just about all of our shifts are evening shift. So most of the time, it's, seems good in the beginning, but after doing it for a couple of years, they're ready to do something different. So that's, we do have a core group of people that seem to just enjoy it and keep going and we're, we're grateful for them. But I think in order for us to, to remain competitive, we've got to continue looking at those, those wages. By the way, we do have, currently have an opening for custodians. So if anybody knows anybody that likes to work hard, please push them over to come see us. And lastly, thank you for approving the support staff raises across all the steps. It's a step in the right direction for our retention numbers and, and I greatly appreciate it and I know my staff appreciate it. Anybody got any questions?
I did joke, Great Lakes just had like a zoo day. I joked with one of the custodians, I said, are you getting paid extra today? Because they had big, large animals that were jumping everywhere. And he said, no, I just love this, so fantastic. You have the best.
We do have, I, I've got a great team. They get, they get really involved in the kids' lives and they do a lot of great things for them.
They do.
It's always good to see them when, whenever I'm there visiting and, and all the kids are going, walking by and going out to recess and they've got all their different fan shades and, you know, they're just, they're good people to be around, so that's good. As a role model.
Thanks.
Next Personnel and Negotiations Committee, Brooke Taylor.
All right, I have one action item. Administration recents approval of the May twenty twenty-four new hires and separations report.
Motion approved.
Got it.
Motion and second, is there any discussion?
Are we doing Molly with still openings or?
Yeah, we had a couple hard to fill teaching positions. Spanish teacher at the middle school and then some specialized jobs, so still looking.
And we have begun to bring people back off the reemployment list for both support staff and teachers, so.
I know there's a lot of talk about that, you know, why are we hiring when we just like, you know, but licensure has so much to do with that and I grasp that, but that's something that we have to deal with, so.
Yeah, licensure at the elementary is different than at the secondary level.
Very much.
Right, and you have to, you speak Spanish.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Heroes.
I just. I wanted to follow up. I, I had asked just about all the paraprofessionals leaving and looking at what, what our vacancies are for that and it, it sounds like Molly, you're pretty confident we'll be okay.
Yep, so we worked with Dina, the principals, to determine what the number is that we need next year and obviously that'll fluctuate a little bit based on I E P needs that change over the summer. But I have, we've called back seven of the paraprofessionals that have been laid off so far and have ten more to call back. I have to go in order of seniority.
Yeah.
Doing that. The teacher group, we've offered ten positions to the twenty-five teachers that were laid off. Nine of them have accepted those jobs, so.
Oh, nice.
And some of those are on here as being offered new positions, but they're currently teachers of the districts. But yeah, we do have paraprofessionals leaving. Some of those people were not laid off and they're just leaving for the normal reasons that we have that leave every school, at the end of every.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in papers signify by surprise.
Aye.
All of the motion carries. I have no discussion items, no informational items, and that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Teaching and Learning Committee, Mr. Schumacher.
All right, no action, no discussion items, informational items. Crystal, summer school update.
All right, just a brief summer school update. Summer school planning is underway, as it typically is this time of year. As of today, we have eight hundred and twenty-four students registered for summer school and registrations open until May thirteenth. So we are on track to have about the same number that we had last year. We were close to a thousand last year and I'm expecting in the next week, we'll, we'll get at least another hundred. So that's exciting. Molly is in the process of offering all the staff positions. I think those are almost all shored up. We typically have about forty teaching staff and about thirty support staff that work during summer school. So summer school's on track to happen as it typically does. Any questions about?
No, and that's good with the difference of schools now this year too, so that's into here.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have good rep partnership with the Y for families who want that.
And then my Act Twenty update, Kate's gonna kind of join me for a little bit of this. I'm gonna just kind of share a brief update, but if any of the new board members have any questions about the background information I, I may skim over, please feel free to ask questions. Act Twenty is the new reading law in Wisconsin that came into place last summer. We've been planning since the day that came to be. It's been a challenge as I, we've shared with you before in a couple of different ways. There are really kind of three components to the law. That's how we've been looking at it. The first is the required training for all of our pre-K through third grade teachers and teachers that teach reading. And the training has specific components that are required at the part of it and we have to use certain vendors and companies, et cetera, as, as our choice for the training. Our teachers did participate in the first day of the training on April nineteenth during our staff development day. Did an awesome job. We all gathered at Cooper and it was very positive. We are continuing it on June sixth, seventh, and tenth and eleventh. We are offering free childcare to our teachers on those days and we did have some teachers take us up on that, so that's really awesome. Our teachers will receive extended contract pay for June tenth and eleventh because their school year contract will be done by then. And then we do, of course, have a small handful of folks. Maybe they're on medical leave this spring or had a major conflict with the training dates this spring. So we will have a small cohort of teachers that will get trained throughout next school year as kind of our backup plan. We've had two of our instructional coaches get trained this spring in being trainers. So we will have our capacity within our district in the future to be able to provide training to new folks that come on board. We are required in the first six months of employment of any pre-K through third grade teacher or teacher that teaches reading to begin that training with them, so we'll, we'll always have to have a kind of a sustainability plan for that.
If they come in with a training though, you don't need to do that, right?
Yeah, 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 but we, and we will, until colleges catch up, providing this training for pre-service teachers and, you know, things like that, we'll have to give them that. So that's kind of the training component. It's off the ground here and expected to continue to be a success. And there's the assessment component.
So we have a couple of updates from the assessment piece of Act Twenty. There, the state is adopting a universal screener, so one universal assessment for all kids in the state of Wisconsin, grades four K through three. Right now, we use Fastbridge and we have Fastbridge data for our kindergarten through eighth grade kids. We have a nice picture. We're still unsure what the state is planning to adopt. But Fastbridge was one that was highly used, right?
Fastbridge is, I believe it is in the running.
We pass our fingers.
They want it.
I was at Renaissance is the company who owns Fastbridge. They have two products in the running, Star and Fastbridge. Although some of the components, I don't think Star meets the requirements, so I'm hopeful. But no one will, they haven't released any additional information. So we will be required to use whatever they select. There's not like a list we can choose from for that. There was a whole bunch of debate and I had shared some legislative information with all of you around requiring, asking our representatives to support an extension in one year. So the implementation of all of the P D and the professional development around reading instruction is happening now and the, the ask was can we delay the implementation of the assessment for one school year and implement in the fall of twenty-five? There was a compromise, I have a hard time saying this without being like confused, but the legislature approved an extension until January one of twenty twenty-five, which does very little in a school year calendar. So a fiscal calendar or a calendar year, that makes sense, we'll, we'll delay till January. I, I, I almost am more confused now on how to train staff because we will still need data in the fall. I don't, I don't believe that saying, we're good, we don't need to gather any, that's not good teaching practice. Our teachers, our principals, our schools will want some, some assessment tools to gather data in the fall. And then we will implement in January whatever the state has selected. So that's the biggest update. We will still be required to notify parents within fifteen days of the assessment with scores for students and will also be required within ten days of the screener to notify or to do a diagnostic assessment for students scoring below the twenty-fifth percentile. That assessment list has not come out. We will be allowed to, we will be allowed to utilize one of a few products on a list. So I'll need to make that purchase this summer, hopefully, if that list comes out soon. So the biggest change in that is they did give us an extension until January one. I mean, I don't want to say.
It's not real, it's, it's not ideal to do this in the middle.
Land in the middle of a school year. And then we also have the rest, our fourth grade through eighth grade, that we've got to make a determination based on what the assessment is. Do we continue using Fastbridge with that group or do we, we make a shift?
So just to reiterate, there's no funding to support either of these things.
So.
When are they, when is the deadline? When do they have?
Deadline is July. There's no like date. Twenty, you have to follow for the assessment and the list of diagnostics. So that's the big, we will, obviously, I just want to reiterate, I'll train as soon as we know. We will make sure teachers are supported and make sure that, do all of that, just like we did with Fastbridge in the last two years. And that will impact all of our continuous recruitment data and trend data as well, so.
I think you have long-term plan in place. Let's say it's not Fastbridge. So someplace along the line in August, we'll be pulling our teachers back in for.
I think we, we've had a lot of conversation around, I, I think we need to have lots of more conversation with principals around when is the best time to do the training. I think we could use some of our staff development time later, potentially in October.
I think it's, you're, you're assuming that there'll be a decision in August.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Assuming.
He's optimistic.
Very much so.
I have found that it is much more beneficial with assessment training to do it closer to when you administer the assessments than further away because then you're doing it and then you have to kind of relearn again when, before. than further away, because then you're doing it, and then you have to kinda relearn again when, before, uh, you do the assessments. So, uh, I'd like to wait as long as possible, um, but I also think there'll have to be a, a lot of conversations. The majority of the, the screening information is the assessment they choose will have a lot of one-on-one assessment components to it with phonics and phonemic awareness, uh, screener. So there will be materials, copies, programs. So we're working on it.
Estimate that the lawsuit for Act twenty is going to influence what's going on right now. I mean, obviously, we're just proceeding and tell us.
Yeah, I think that we, I think that the lawsuit has challenged pieces that don't necessarily affect our day-to-day operations with how we're planning forward. I think those, I think the funding and the, the legal implications, that's kind of been my teaching, our conversation. It has consumed a lot of our work this year. So, um, on top of everything. I mean, we will still need to train our teachers in science-based literacy practices, which is what we've started. We will still need to assess our students. And then that last category that I'll just share briefly about is the resources component of the law. So, um, there is still local control in Wisconsin for districts to determine what curricular materials you want to use. But of course, in the Act twenty law, they designated a state-level committee to come together. There were nine people on the committee. One dropped out partway through the process. So there were eight people who ended up finishing that work to determine a list of recommended resources that districts could submit partial reimbursement for if they bought one of those. Um, and the partial reimbursement is based on the amount that all districts together like apply for. So it is not mine or any other curriculum director that I collaborate with throughout the state's like assumption that that would be a large amount of money at all of reimbursement. It wouldn't be a, a reason to necessarily make a choice. We still want to make the best instructional decision for our kids. Anyway, the state-level committee was supposed to finish their work by December first. They finished their work on this, on February fifteenth. They did ask for two extensions throughout that process. They turned over their recommend, recommendations to D P I. D P I did release a twelve-page report after they did their, came up with their own findings about curricular resources for this, and they expressed concerns about the process that the statewide committee had done. All of that was turned over to the J F C to make a decision. And the J F C determined that the list that the committee had recommended of four resources would be the list that they recommended. So D P I, for reimbursement, yes. So, um, D P I then reiterated to districts, you have local control. Obviously, we need to be sure whatever we teach students is science-based literacy aligned, whether, no matter what resource that you choose. So we then had to have some conversation about, okay, what is our path forward here? Um, knowing that we are, um, up for and needing a new literacy resource anyway. We are in year eight of our current literacy resource. So, um, we took the rubric that our district has around, um, looking at curricular resources, specifically literacy based on best practice and research. And we determined four that met our top criteria, which is that it was a pre-K through five resource. Obviously, four K, um, needs to continue to be a strong integrated part of our four K through fifth grade picture. So we wanted to include them in the process. Um, so we, on April nineteenth, shared with all of our elementary teachers everything that I've just said in, in, in a little bit more detail and, um, asked all of our elementary teachers for feedback about where we go from here. So a hundred and eleven of our teachers, um, that day filled out the survey and gave some feedback. Sixty-seven percent of our teachers said that they would like a smaller team to come together, representing our elementary teachers across the district to do some work this summer to look at those resources and determine what's next for us. Um, thirty-six teachers signed up for that process. We're gonna do that on June thirteenth and June eighteenth. There is a, there is a research-based process that, of course, we follow in looking at these. So we'll, we'll go through that on both of those days. Um, we are going through that process with the hope and intention that we would select a resource that then we could implement in the fall of twenty twenty-five. Because, um, train, selecting, ordering, getting materials here, paying for materials and getting a hundred and fifty teachers trained takes more than just a month or two. So we would work on that throughout next school year. So that's a little bit about that process.
Are any of the ones that you selected part of the ones for partial reimbursements?
Um, one of, one of the four on the list would be available for partial reimbursement. Thank you. Questioned? Thanks. Good luck.
You still have more?
I have.
It's Kate, State Assessment Update.
There you go. Thank you for that. Uh, I just have some exciting ones to share. Kim had shared earlier, but welcome to our, uh, new and returning board members. Kate Tesch, Director.
Intimate assessment.
We're done. State testing season is officially over. It's like the biggest celebration for me and all of our principals, teachers, kids. Uh, so forward exam, some pretty impressive, uh, participation results. Uh, we had almost, uh, every, well, everyone met the ninety-five percent or greater, uh, test participation kind of benchmark. That is a benchmark set federally. So we get two different reports. We get our state report card, but we also get a federal report card. Um, and that is where the, uh, participation rate is indicated. So we did meet ninety-five percent or greater, uh, test, test participation for all of our tests and all of our grade levels, which is a huge celebration, especially, uh, in light of some of what Erin had shared about attendance. I think at all levels, we tested more students off-site at treatment facilities. We had people taking devices, testing kids individually for days on end, myself included. Some of our coaches, like Beggs, going here, testing one kid for four to five hours, going here the next days and days. So kudos to everyone, hands, hands-on testing. I, I'm super proud of the whole team uh, in our district because we, we worked really hard this year and it was not an easy feat. We had a number of elementary schools test one hundred percent of their third, fourth, and fifth graders, which is a pretty big deal too. So, um, Erin had mentioned some preliminary data is, uh, populating in the A C T portal. The state takes some time to validate that data, and we should have some data validation for the A C T and pre-A C T. So ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders in the next probably three to four weeks, which will be exciting. And then our forward data release date is July twenty-seventh. So we gotta wait a little bit on that. So, um, the other exciting piece is we started A P testing, uh, today. So we still have the A P testing. High school does a really nice job. We have a lot of kids taking multiple A P tests. Pretty exciting, uh, atmosphere to get them seated. So the testing update. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
That is all. Sure.
That's for me.
Legislative Committee, Brooke.
Action items, none. Discussion items, none. Informational items. W P F issues report on school referenda from Wisconsin Policy Forum. Voters across Wisconsin approved sixty-two of the one hundred and three school district referenda placed on primary and general election ballots this spring. The sixty point two percent approval rate was the lowest in a midterm or presidential election year since twenty-ten, with the most ballot questions for spring elections since at least two thousand. More districts asked to increase property taxes for operations rather than capital needs, a sign of the stress they are facing from inflation. State caps on their revenues, declining enrollment, and the expiration of the federal pandemic aid. Wisconsin School Safety Bill ten fifty, twenty-twenty-three Wisconsin Act two hundred and forty was signed into law by Governor Evers on March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four. The bill is short-term bridge funding, which allows the state of Wisconsin to provide ongoing funding for the O S S as part of the twenty-five, twenty through twenty-seven biennial budgets. As per the Wisconsin Department of Justice's news release, this bridge funding makes it possible for the O S S to continue to support school safety through September twenty twenty-five.
It's good news for us.
Yeah.
Cause we do them a lot.
Sent a letter or didn't?
Yep.
Um, and that ends my report.
Thank you. Our final report, Policies and Rules Committee, Mr. Gallagher.
All right. We have a couple of action items. Each one will need its own motion second. Um, administration proposes the approval of changes to the following policies based on your recommendations or being compliance with state and/or federal law updates. First one is the first reading of policy eighty-six hundred regarding transportation.
Second.
The motion is second. Let's all review that on the screen and discuss it.
This is a Neil update.
Any discussion? Any discussion? There are no discussion. Hobbies in favor, same by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next one is the first reading of policy eighty-four ninety regarding graduation requirements. This was on our last month, but they corrected, um, here.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
No, just thank you to Kyle for pointing that out. Our, we talked about this being the right class, but the, the it was wrong on the policy. So.
Thanks, Kyle. Your top ten.
Thank you.
The only change is twenty twenty-seven to twenty twenty-eight. Otherwise, same as last year. Any other discussion on there? There are no discussion. Hobbies in favor, same by saying aye. Any opposed? No opposition there. I have no discussion items, no informational items, and that concludes, uh, business of my committee.
Thank you. This time I'd like to adjourn this meeting and see everybody next Monday, May thirteenth, five o'clock right here.
We're supposed to have any other comments by the board members?
Next one.
Hold his thoughts.
It's out.